No, that was a grant.
So did you?
Sure, it's just the remainder of Ledge Road and the amount of $197,737.82 and that will be from the bridge to Ledge Road. Anything I missed there, Mr. Giuliani?
Bridge to North Bedford Road, correct.
Yeah, you said bridge to Ledge Road.
North Bedford, I'm sorry. So I said the wrong road, I apologize.
Well, that's why Joe's here.
We are, we're gonna go under the railroad bridge, right?
Correct. We'll stop at the west end of the bridge where the last paving job left off years ago.
And do you want to just, for reference, explain why that was done in those two steps for the road, the remainder of the road?
Why Ledge Road was paved in two different times this summer? It really, it's an outside funding mechanism strategy so we can, we have OPWC funding for the first part that's going on right now. We're using permissive license tax funding for the second part. And I don't want to intermingle the two contracts because then the reimbursement could get fuzzy and that would be bad for us.
Anyone have any questions? I'm assuming we want to go one, two, three on something like this?
Oh, please.
Okay. All right, thirty-five?
This is housekeeping. We use Walter and Drain for the codes.
Yeah, it's now American Legal. So you guys see this a couple times a year now, like the frequency for online updates through the codifier. This is incorporating both your locally passed code amendments and allowing the codifier to codify out, make the organizational changes online. And also doing the same for recent revised changes passed by the General Assembly to the extent they're approved in our code.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, I'm assuming we want to do this one, two, three to get it done sooner than later, right?
It's up to you.
Anyone object to one, two, three? Was that a no?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay, I thought you were saying you objected.
Get it out of the way.
Yep.
Be done.
Okay, thirty-six.
So this is the grant we use to pay for the lights at Longwood on the ball field, the second ball field. It's twenty-nine, around $29,000 we get each year over three years. Helps with a great portion of that cost and it's a nice thing and NOPEC gives that based on the number of users that are in a community. And as long as we maintain that, we can continue to get those dollars. And the best part about it is NOPEC's a nonprofit, so that's why we get that back. I don't see any for-profit companies giving anything back anywhere. So NOPEC really does a good job with, with giving those dollars back to the local communities. I'm a little bit of a champion of that since I'm on the board, so.
Anyone have any questions?
This is, this is not a specific grant, like we don't know how much money we're gonna get from the grant this year.
Yes, it should be listed in the attachments.
It's around 29,000, $30,000 each year.
Okay.
But it has to be used towards energy-type.
Energy-related projects.
Correct.
I'm assuming one, two, three on this?
Yeah, there is a deadline.
There is, okay. All right. All right, ordinance thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven is to add a seasonal clerk for finance, kind of another language cleanup. Is there anything I'm missing there, Mark?
He's sitting right here.
It's, Vinnie does a great job. I don't think there's anyone that doesn't think Vinnie's doing an amazing job up there. And this gives us the ability to maintain that.
Is there a difference between part-time and seasonal? I mean, I mean, there are on the, on the sheet. What is the difference?
Seasonal is more kind of like Vinnie because it's just over the summer and he goes to college in Florida for the rest of the year, basically. Part-time would be.
Throughout a whole year, but part-time, okay.
So you guys recently amended the definition for seasonal employee.
Mr. Goodaddy, can you speak into the microphone? I know it's hard to hear.
If memory serves, I believe your recent amendment to the seasonal employee definition is no more than six months per year and ten.
Twenty-nine hours.
And no more than 29 hours per week, yeah. I think there was a, there's a maximum cap hours.
Started with.
Does it make a distinction?
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm assuming since he's already here, we'd like to do one, two, three?
One would think.
Okay, thirty-eight.
This one's pretty simple, taking the insurance from one million to 10 million requirement.
Oh, state requirement?
Yeah, for fireworks.
Is there any reason for this or just kind of housekeeping?
Kind of a standard.
State will have fire code.
Fire code and right now it's only the city who does commercial shows, but that could change. We, when we bid them out, request 10 million insurance. So just felt it was best to bring up to this.
So we're already doing it?
Yeah.
Then if, anybody have any questions? If we're already doing it, I'm gonna recommend one, two, three?
Yeah.
Thirty-nine.
So another fireworks-related one rescinding what was previously in place where it said you had to place a shell in a trench. Obviously, things have changed and I think what brought that on from our conversation this morning was when they had that issue in Independence where the shell fell over and unfortunately that young lady lost her life. But you don't need to put them in a trench anymore and there's a lot of other things in place that, for safety, obviously. And you guys have been to the events when we do them, I think we, we take that to a very high level to make sure all of our guests and people that are there are gonna be safe. Did I miss anything, Chief?
Nope. Anyone else have any questions? One, two, three, and it says it's an emergency. And number forty, Ms. Brandt?
All right, this is an amendment to our dogs, cats, and other animals at large. Basically, we, the city was not requiring a dog to be on a leash when you were out walking it outside of your property. This amendment requires you to have your dog leashed and be under control of it. Have a leash or an, and let's see, a reasonable restraint described by someone that is strong enough to control the animal using the leash. I definitely want to keep this on first read. We'll let this go throughout the summer to see if anyone has any questions. I looked at other cities to see what they have and I don't, it was Hudson, Warrens. I think Warrensville was the one I, I liked the most because it had the most comprehensive language. I think a lot of residents and myself were surprised to learn that we did not have a requirement for dogs to be on leashes when they were off the property. And if you think about it, you know, when the, when the city was formed, probably when the ordinance was written, you know, the city was, was different. There was a lot more open spaces. There wasn't dense neighborhoods at the time. Now there's dense neighborhoods. Now if you're walking your dog, you're going to be walking past someone else's property. I've been a dog owner for over, you know, 40 years. I know the importance of not only keeping your animal safe by keeping them on a leash, but keeping other people's animals safe by keeping your animal on a leash. I know my dog was leash reactive, so when he was on a leash, if a friendly dog came up to him, he would have gone after that other dog, even though my dog was on a leash and the other dog was on leash. There's also a problem with people walking on the sidewalks and their dogs going up into other people's properties. That is, you know, people may say, well, I have my dog under control, which is what the previous language was, but they're not quite under your control if you can't see them, if they're 20 feet away, if they're somewhere in someone else's yard. So I think this is for the benefit of safety for dogs on leashes, dogs that were previously off leashes, and residents to keep their properties safe from, from dogs. I did want to point out that ordinance two, or 951.14 regarding parks, we already have a leash law for, on the books for the parks. It says no one, no one can bring any animal into the park unless they're controlled at all times on a leash not more than eight feet long. So Mr. Goodaddy and I had, had talked about possibly amending the park leash law to match the wording that we have here with a more robust wording or to simplify the wording in 505.01 just to be on a leash not more than eight feet long. So if anyone has any input on this, you know, I'd, I'd like to hear it, to see what you have to say about, about leashes. I don't know if any of you are currently, though, Mr. Finley, I know that you're a dog owner. So I'd be interested to hear other people's thoughts on the amendments here to dogs and leashes in neighborhoods.
I have a thought. I don't currently have a dog. I had a dog a very long time ago. But what about dog owners who have like an impeccably trained dog that like stays right by their ankle and listens to every single command they issue to that dog? And they, in, in the spirit of the current law, they have that dog under control. They would now be mandated to use a leash even though they have that dog properly trained, right? There's no exceptions whatsoever for that?
So if your dog is already near you and stays by you, you're just adding a leash. Is that a, is that a problem for the owner to have a leash?
No, I'm just, I'm just making sure that that's what we're changing, right?
As currently drafted, yeah.
As currently drafted.
We're expecting all dogs to be like the dog that you described.
Right.
In the, in the current version and that is not the reality, you know, especially in a dense, in a dense neighborhood where everything you walk by is, is a, it's.
It's a distraction.
Yeah. Most dogs are not gonna be that way. Dogs, you know, you're walking, they are under your control, but they'll go off into someone's yard. Like I said, they'll come, they'll go up to other dogs that are on leashes, which can cause a problem.
My experience with dogs in the city is the complete opposite. It's not necessarily people that have walked by my house. There's this house right around the corner from me that has this beautiful dog. And I saw it six houses away, like it was running away. So being the friendly pro-dog person I am, I pulled into their driveway, went to ring on their doorbell and didn't think that through. It saw me and came to attack me because I was on its yard. And I accomplished the goal. I got it back, but I almost got bit in the process. And so that wouldn't have been protect, well, I guess it would, they would have been in violation of this because it did come off of their property.
Right, so we already have, yeah, we already have legislation, I mean, that mandates that you keep your animal on your property.
I could just foresee.
Is not under your control.
Right. I could just foresee a potential resident coming in, for example, the one that was complaining about, saying, well, wait a minute, I want to continue to be able to have my dog under verbal command control and not necessarily.
I don't quite know what the benefit of allowing that is for residents. The benefit, it benefits all residents if, if all dogs are on leashes. If a dog is really that good and is clearly under your control and right next to you and healing, it should not be a large leap to put the dog on, on a leash. So I just don't know what the benefit to anyone is to allow dogs to be off-leash at this time with the, with the makeup of our city and the way that it's, you know, the neighborhoods are so dense and there's, you know, property owned everywhere.
I, I agree with Ms. Brandt for several reasons, the density of what we're, you know, living in right now. And in the parks, and again, I'll go back to the word distraction. A child riding down the street or riding down the sidewalk on a bicycle, kids playing in the park. There's so many distractions, you will never, ever guarantee that a dog is gonna listen to every command. It's just not feasible. It's not gonna happen. And do you want that last ditch thing that, oh, well, he was at my side at the time, now something happens. The child panics, maybe the dog doesn't go that far, but because it's loose and running towards them, now they fall over on their bicycle or whatever, or they yell and scream and carry on and agitate the animal even more. I, I just, I, she has, Ms. Brandt has my full support on that.
All right, so we're gonna let this go to three, so we'll be hopefully doing a final vote on it in August. So if any residents have any questions about this, you can send me a message. I'd be happy to discuss it with you. You know, I'm open to ideas, but I think this is a pretty good idea at this point for our city in the way that, that we're made up now.
Okay. Well, in hindsight, 15 minutes would have been a long enough work session.
We have one more.
The gift card?
Oh, the motion.
Oh.
Do you want me to draft, because I think your point was to make the parks ordinance mirror this ordinance? Do you want me to draft that to mirror this for the next meeting or?
Like I said, I like the language that we have here that it's, it's a little more. Chief Yakobich, do you prefer a more stringent, you know, they have to be on all, at all times on a leash not more than eight feet long? Or the wording that we have in 505, that's, that's the parks one that says a leash no longer than eight, eight feet long? Or you prefer, prefer more language like we wrote for 505?
The eight foot to me is not really relevant so much as, but one of the biggest complaints I get is the dog's 100 feet from the person they're, they're here. And obviously the ladies that came to the counseling, that was one of the concerns they still come up with. So I think, I mean, they make those retractable leashes that are about 20 feet. I think probably something that keeps the dog from, and I want to say this very carefully, but to be in compliance with those people complaining, she can get a leash that's really long and continue to do exactly what she is doing and she's compliant. So take that into account. The other thing is, I don't know, is there a copiable in there that doesn't apply to police or working dogs? Because we need to make sure that that's in there as well.
No, we should. That was in one of the example cities and I don't think we added it in here.
You were thinking for other departments.
And I mean, we've had three dogs in the past, nothing to say it won't give another dog in the future, no more violating our own ordinance.
Sure. Yeah, that was part of, so we read it, you must have read it in another one, but we don't have it in here. So if you could add to that, Mr. Goodaddy.
I think some leash length.
So.
What it has currently, it says the length of a leash or other restraint shall be no longer than is reasonably necessary to maintain control of a dog or cat, this applies to cats as well, to prevent the animal from trespassing on private property you're chasing or attacking. So it's kind of an offset discretion that has drafted right now versus the flat eight foot rule.
So, so we're thinking of copying this language and applying it to the parks ordinance? Because the one in the parks just says flat eight, and you like the language that, that gives you a little more leeway to have a longer leash than a shorter.
It's definitive, like you can't keep your, I, I jokingly said earlier, I have 5,000 feet of twine in my yard, in my garage. I can tie that to my dog in seven patches and I can pull him back so many control. Obviously, that's extreme, but the big complaint is at least be reasonably close to your dog. The dog that they were complaining about is 100 to 200 feet from its owner. The dog is elderly, it listens, it doesn't do anything, but it's not even close to the owner of that dog.
All right, so we don't have a length.
So you want like a hat or a sort of the old, your suggestion?
I took C 30 feet, 25 feet, something.
Probably 20 feet. I think those.
Yeah, the average real leashes I think are about 20 feet.
I think that's.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point and, you know, we have the easements when you're walking on this, on the streets. And, you know, if it's 30 feet, you're definitely within, you know, you're gonna be, have access to someone's yard. So yeah, go ahead and draft that for 951.14 too. And we'll see if we can come to consensus on, on getting these.
Are we gonna take the chief's suggestion also, Mr. Goodaddy, on the exception with the military, law enforcement?
Yeah, he's gonna add that?
Yep.
Probably add to the mark, one, two, just for consistency purposes.
I never even thought of that myself. That's a great idea.
I've often thought about, you know, some of the times the dogs have been out, when we had dogs and, you know, somebody that you may have had to warn, say, well, your dog's off leash, you know, and just call them.
All right, thank you.
Are we done with forty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's a motion to accept unclaimed cash and gift cards in the possession of the police department. Do you like to speak to them? Do you want to talk about the motion?
A lot of this is found property. People turn it in to the police station with some gift cards. Some of it's property that people left when they left out of jail. They can take it with them. Leave it, goes to the general fund. So at this point, we've tried everything to find the owner to it and it was.
Okay. Any questions on the motion? All right. Anything else anyone wants to talk about? I, we have some time to give back if not.
I'd like to bring up something very briefly and I haven't done enough research on it yet to, to bring up anything more than the complaints that I've gotten. There's been a couple in the past 10 days with the solicitors pushing themselves a little bit too much. And the debate also is what is the time restriction at the end of a day? Is it eight o'clock? Is it a half hour after sunset or is it a half hour after dusk? I had a lady extenuating circumstances in one development whose husband passed away not too long ago. This guy was a little bit high pressure, tried to scare her in signing a contract by pointing to a spider web in her door, at the top of her doorway, front doorway, and he just wouldn't take no for an answer. And again, we need to have them not complain to just the council representative. Call the police at the time it happens so that the police department can come in the area and at least try to spot that person and advise them, look, we gotta complain, if we gotta talk to you again.
Was that like 7:57 PM, right around that?
Ah, she told me it was between 8:30 and 9 o'clock.
Because currently Director Goodaddy, wasn't it?
So it's 9:00 AM and one half hour after sunset as established by the U.S. Department of Commerce, National Oceanic and Antispiric Administration.
So we're looking now at 9:30, is the latest they can go?
I think that, I think that's a little too late to be going to somebody's house and knocking on their door. Dinner's over with, you're not expecting it. You get a lot of seniors and there's just, there's just too much leeway there for them to, to bother the residents. And they're not abiding by the no solicitation either. And that's a thing that you and I have already talked about, that they gotta call you at the time. Well.
As I was walking over here, we were dealing with a call and I came over and talked to Director Goodaddy. The biggest, and we can talk about some changes, but I'm just gonna throw it out there. They have these kids who, the kid today had, was given a permit by his boss from the Ohio State Agriculture Association or something in that effect. Go ahead. This kid knows nothing of what he's supposed to do. So it is the person who submits the application for the permit, they are required to list all people who will be soliciting on their behalf. This young man was not listed on the permit application. They didn't have a permit. His boss informed him of nothing. We can charge the boss with failing to list the kid, but if the kid was listed, and yes, these kids have responsibility. Ignorance of the law is no excuse, but again, they're kids. This is maybe their first job. The boss says, here you go, you're all set. We need something where we start charging the person in charge. Let's all stop it real quick. No knock list, soliciting without a permit, any of that. Start charging the corporation, the boss, whoever submitted, whoever's in charge. They all have, what we call my boss, he's in a van, he'll come and pick me up. That's the person that needs to be held accountable and we really want to make this.
I had one person from Park Ledge tell me that the solicitor had a list and it was red dots next to several names and addresses, which led them to believe that those were not to be, not, or solicited. And he just went through the whole neighborhood anyway. And again, if they're not calling you, calling me after the fact doesn't help at all.
Well, we've had over the past couple weeks, we've had a lot of complaints, a lot. And I will say, I mean, yeah, we, we were dealing with it last week. I will say that they came in my neighborhood. And surprisingly, I know myself and the neighbor across the street are on the no-knock list. And I was outside working. I went to the neighbor next door and I thought, I'm gonna ask him for it and he's gonna come talk to me. He didn't. He went to go to the guy across the street and he went to the neighbor. So he, this person, I guess is one of the few, but I was kind of pleased and disappointed at some time.
That happened in my neighborhood too. The exact same thing. I was out working and he just kept going because I'm on the list.
So there, just to add to that, so the code's currently drafted. It makes a second degree misdemeanor for any person who fails to comply with the code. And that includes the person who filled out the application. So if the applicant didn't properly follow the steps, they can be charged with a second degree misdemeanor. On top of that, the city has to first give notice to the applicant or the solicitor, the other campus or, of a violation of the chapter, then a hearing is required. And after that is completed, if the violation is proven, then the mayor can actually rescind their permit to solicit campus. So that's kind of a, probably a civil penalty, but there's additional penalties beyond just citing an address.
Are we able to change the times? Are we able to make our own?
That's all, yeah, that's all. We already did that too.
Yeah, I think we need to tighten this up and what the chief's referring to is they, I was here working and I have the ring doorbell, so it naturally comes up. I got the big sticker that says do not knock. You know, it is very frustrating to me because it's happening to me too. And in that very same day, my next door neighbor and one other person that lives in the town sent me a picture of someone at their door and they're going, what the heck? So if we stiffen it, I'm all about it. If you guys want to do that, I, I think it's out of control. These guys, they fly these kids in from, I think the one was Utah. We had one from California. I mean, they, they just fly them all over to, to sell bug spray and that's great, but I don't want to be bothered by it. And if you're on the no-knock list, obviously you don't want to be either. So if we can stiffen it, tighten the timeframe, I'm all about it.
Mr. Goodaddy, I'll research that and dissect it a little bit more and, you know, work with you on that. And if council's okay with that, the rest of the council's okay.
Sounds good. Yeah.
Okay. Anyone have anything else? Just so everyone's aware, it's not on your agendas. There will be an executive session following new business. And with that, you've got three minutes.
Well, two thousand twenty-five Macedonia City Council meeting, it is seven thirty PM. Mr. Huber, will you please call the room?
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Burrow.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
That's me. Here.
Now, if you please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge.
We gather here this evening with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community. Grant us clarity of thought, open hearts, and a spirit of collaboration as we discuss matters that impact the lives of those we represent. Help us approach each decision with integrity, fairness, and compassion, always mindful of the diverse needs of our community. May our work here this evening contribute to the well-being and unity of our city. Amen? And now our mayor, the Honorable Nick Molnar, will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jefan O'Brien. We appreciate you.
Yep.
Um, I'm sure.
All right, the Robinas can go join me up here with your mentors. That'd be great. Listen, my biggest fear in life is whether speaking and I pick up cameras, and you guys can do it. So I have a proclamation for you today that agrees with this. Whereas First Robotic is an international competition that challenges students to design, build, and program a robot in just eight weeks to complete specific tasks. Whereas Nerdonia Team Eighty-Seven Thirteen began just four years ago with only four students, and now has grown to eleven hardworking and talented team members. If I slaughter your name, help me out, I'm gonna do my best. Charles Dusick, the AMBI, Nick Barar, Barar Danelli, Hunter Gable, Max LaPica, Jane Ramsey, Camden Livingston, Casey Bozel. Evan Deep Nasen, did I get that right?
My boss?
He's in Miami.
Riley Seeger and Aiden Fio. Chetlon, that was my second guess. I was, I was actually thinking of. Whereas the team is guided and supported by their dedicated mentors, Kelly.
Neisen.
Neisen and Nathan Yucus. And whereas in their rookie year, the team earned Rookie Inspiration Award. And in 2025, they finished thirteenth out of fifty-four teams at the Buckeye Regional, competing against teams from around the tri-state area and countries like Turkey and the Dominican Republic. Whereas Team Eighty-Seven Thirteen was selected for playoffs at the Buckeye Regional, and later on, it competed in the Ohio State Championship, where they were part of the Winning Alliance. But whereas the team plans to continue growing and attending even more competitions in the coming year. Now therefore, we proudly recognize and congratulate Nerdonia Team Eighty-Seven Thirteen for their outstanding achievements in the 2025 First Robotic season, and commend the students and their mentors for their dedicated dedication to innovation, education, and excellence in STEM. In witness, I have here unto my hand, caused the seal of Macedonia, this affixed on the twelfth of June, 2025. And this is for the team. Congratulations. We welcome to the recognition of athletics, a lot, and the kind of life that I absolutely love. The Robinas too, on behalf of the STEM event with the, uh, Rotary Club, I recognize you from being there, and you guys are doing amazing stuff. But you all can go speak now, so go ahead.
We would like to thank our sponsors, Nerdonia Hill City Schools, Eaton Corporation, Nerdonia Schools Foundation, the Nerdonia High School Student Council, and the United States Air and Space Force.
I think it's awesome, though. Anything else?
No.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for coming. It's awesome to be here. Okay, next up on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, May eighth, uh, regular council meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next on our agenda is the public comments. Uh, if you please come to the microphone, state your name and your address. We limit your time to five minutes. Chief, will you keep the time for me, please? And first on our list is Vili Millianta.
Hi, I'm Vinnie, ten ninety-five Hampton Drive. Um, I don't like the, the dog amendment. I think it just penalizes me for walking my dog. My dog likes to zigzag, so she goes a little bit on the tree lawn, a little bit on thing, but she's not harmful or anyway. I don't mind the leash. The leash is fine. But the, the penalizing for being, uh, on the property itself, I think it's just a little overkill, especially for, uh, what the dog is doing. It's not very individual. So technically, by the letter of the law, if I ever, anytime I walk my dog, I know she's gonna kinda do this. She's not even on a long leash, but she will step onto the tree lawn. So by doing that, technically, I'd be out of compliance. So I just don't like this.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, next up is Jordan Petchi.
I brought some pronouns for the five council members, if that's all right.
Sure.
Go to the law director, please.
All right. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Jordan Petchi. I'm a former patrolman, uh, for Macedonia Police of ten years and currently reside here in the city, five thirty-five Ledge Road. I'm respectfully here to bring to your attention two serious issues of my concern. First is regarding the ci- city's failure to honor a settlement agreement signed on January sixth, 2025, following my voluntary resignation. The second issue is a safety concern as a resident of the city. My first issue is that under the settlement agreement signed by myself, OPBA, Mayor Molnar, and Law Director Goodetti, the city was required to notify the Ohio Attorney General's Office immediately after January thirteenth, 2025, to update my OPADA status from terminated to resignation in good standing. I brought with me a copy of the contract and an email exchange from myself and Chief Yakapovich, accepting my resignation as evidence of the breach of contract and untruthfulness of Chief Yakapovich. This was a critical term to, to protect my ability to continue my career in law enforcement. However, as of today, June twelfth, 2025, my status remains terminated, and I've received no evidence that the city, through the Director of Law or Chief Yakapovich, has taken any action to comply. The form to fulfill the agreement, the agreed term, is to be completed by Chief Yakapovich, who has been defiant even with the signed settlement contract. This purposeful inaction should be considered in subordination and needs to be addressed. Chief Yakapovich, as a terminal administrator for the city of Macedonia, has an obligation to ensure the information sent to OPADA is true and complete. The OPADA portal is a public record, and by keeping my status as terminated, Chief Yakapovich is putting inaccurate information out there on behalf of the city, and this should be concerning to council, Mayor Molnar, and members of the community. Despite having a settlement agreement and accepted resignation, Chief Yakapovich has not communicated my separation status to the Office of Professional Standards. This breaches, caused me significant harm financially and for future employment opportunities, since this started back in May of 2024. The Ohio Patrolman Benevolance Association filed a grievance on my behalf in February, and arbitration is currently pending, but the city's delay continues to impact my livelihood. I urge the council to ensure the city fulfills its legal obligation, legal obligations under the agreement with compensation. Chief Yakapovich's pur- purposeful inaction on this matter is concerning, and I respectfully request your oversight to resolve this promptly. My second issue is that I'm deeply concerned about our police department's stability. Since the leadership change about three years ago, I've learned that at least fourteen officers have resigned from the department of approximately twenty-four patrolmen and sergeants, which is more than half of the department. The city is constantly recruiting and posting for recruitment. Some of these officers have returned to previous departments, taking a pay cut just to leave the city of Macedonia. This turnover rate raises questions about leadership and community safety. I respectfully ask the council to investigate the reasons behind these resignations and take steps to ensure a stable, effective police force. This is clearly a retention issue and not a recruitment issue. Thank you for addressing these issues, and I thank you for your time and attention. Concerning the contract that I printed out for each of the council members, um, page two, I circled the paragraph in which the contract was breached. Um, and if you go to the very last page I provided, is the email exchange in which Chief Yakapovich accepts my resignation. Thank you for your time.
If I may, your mayor, because this is a little bit of a unique public comment situation. If you don't mind me responding at least to part one.
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, what section did Mr. Petchi circle there? Is it the third bullet point on page two?
Yes, sir.
By chance?
Yes.
So I can't speak directly to Mr. Petchi because he's represented by council, um, but I will, I will read this verbatim. The city, also upon this agreement becoming enforceable pursuant to section five, shall send correspondence, now this is important, facts are important. What Mr. Petchi just got up here and said, factually inaccurate. Some people would view it as defamatory or have the opinion it's defamatory. Because what he said is not accurate. Send correspondence through its Director of Law to the Ohio Attorney General's Office. Council President, what, if you could tell me what this is? Or mayor?
Um, yeah, either one. I was just reading it before I answered.
So does that appear to be correspondence sent by the city's Director of Law, which would be mean, to the Ohio Attorney General's Office, indicating the termination of Mr. Petchi was withdrawn? And that Petchi voluntarily resigned from his employment as a law enforcement officer with the city? And enclosing a fully executed copy of this agreement?
That's what it is.
Okay. Verbatim, is that what that says?
Yeah.
And when was that sent?
January sixteenth, 2025.
And Mr. Petchi, your attorney has been provided a copy of that? And if he hasn't provided a copy of that to you, I apologize, because attorneys should be communicating to their clients. So I am sorry if he did not do that for you. But that did go into OPADA. I confirm they receive it, and I actually emailed OPADA as well. Everything you said about the chief not doing anything is not true, because that's not what was required by the settlement agreement. And quite frankly, I believe it's bad faith, the arguments you and your attorney are making. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is correspondent clerk.
Counselor.
All right, then we will move right into pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number thirty-four.
Okay, thirty-four. Mayor, I would like to offer ordinance thirty-four, twenty twenty-five for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Carvo Companies, Inc. for the resurfacing of a portion of Ledge Road in the city of Macedonia.
Mr. Gelati.
Yes, this is to ord- the paving contract to Carvo Companies, resurface Ledge Road, uh, from the railroad bridge to North Bedford Road, work, uh, to occur later this summer.
And can you, we, we talked about it in work session, but can you again discuss or, or talk about why we did that in two steps?
Yeah, we did it in two steps, uh, to maximize our outside grant funding. Uh, we're using OPWC funds for phase one, which is currently under construction. Uh, we'll use, uh, county permissive license tax funding for phase two, which is the piece of legislation before you. Uh, and I don't like to, uh, intermingle the two contracts and the two funding sources. Uh, by keeping them separate, we can maximize our, our grant funding and, uh, eliminate the possibility of any inconsistencies.
And that's in the amount of one hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents.
I believe that's correct. Look at you. Numbers.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? What is your pleasure?
I would move that we pass, opposed according to law, ordinance thirty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance thirty-four carries. Ordinance number thirty-five.
I move to offer ordinance number thirty-five, twenty twenty-five, for all three readings by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion and amendment of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Macedonia.
Uh, Mr. Goodetti.
So this is simply a housekeeping measure that you see annually incorporating certain local legislation as well as state legislation recently enacted?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number thirty-five, twenty twenty-five, and post the same according to law. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance thirty-five carries. Ordinance number thirty-six.
Mayor, I, uh, move to offer ordinance number thirty-six, twenty twenty-five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council in order to accept energy, energized community grants.
This is the grant we get for around twenty-nine, thirty thousand dollars that we use to put the new lights on the second ball field. It helps to cover that cost of, of, of putting those on. All these are related to energy and energy savings. The lights that we have there are very efficient. And that's why, uh, NOPAC has an involvement in that, and it's a great thing that they give back to our local communities based on the usage of the people that are involved in NOPAC. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none? What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number thirty-six, twenty twenty-five, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance thirty-six carries. Ordinance thirty-seven.
I offer ordinance number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance providing the current compensation schedule for the non-union employees of the city of Macedonia, Ohio.
Uh, Director Varis.
Yes?
This is your ordinance, sir.
Well, it's actually a net.
Well, it affects him, so I figured I'd have him speak to it. But I'll make it simple. Seasonal clerk for finance, it gives us a little flexibility to bring in somewhat of an intern, so. Does that explain that?
Yes.
Well enough for y'all?
Better than I could.
Perfect.
Doesn't have anything to do with a refund.
No.
No bearing on the reason that refund.
Well played. Well played. Any further discussion? Hearing none? What is your pleasure?
I offer ordinance number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five, and move to adopt and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance thirty-seven carries. Ordinance number thirty-eight.
I move to offer ordinance thirty-eight, twenty twenty-five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending section fifteen nineteen dot zero two of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia relative to fireworks.
This one's pretty simple. It's requiring the insurance to be ten million, as opposed to one million. It's something that the city had already been doing, but if anyone else decides that they would like to have a display of that nature, it's gonna be ten million dollars of insurance, and I think rightfully so. That makes total sense. Any further discussion? Hearing none? What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance thirty-eight, twenty twenty-five, and post it the same according to law. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance thirty-eight carries. Ordinance number thirty-nine.
I move to offer ordinance number thirty-nine, twenty twenty-five, for all three readings by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance rescinding emergency ordinance number forty-five dash nineteen ninety-nine, passed May twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-nine.
This rescission is one that takes away the requirement for them to fire fireworks from a trench. Uh, things have changed, obviously, and the technologies change in which they fire fireworks. So it does, it just pulls that back. So it does, it just pulls that back away from that. Am I missing anything from the Law Department or the Fire Chief?
No, sir.
Reader refunds or, oh, sorry.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number thirty-nine, 2025, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance thirty-nine carries. Ordinance number forty.
I offer a motion to read ordinance forty, 2025, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 505.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia relative to dogs and cats running at large.
Would you like to speak to this, Ms. Brandt?
This is basically amending our ordinances to require that dogs be on leashes when they're being walked through neighborhoods or when they're not on your property. This ordinance is kind of still in draft mode, so we'll be taking resident opinions on it. We had a discussion about it in the work session. So if anyone would like a detailed copy of it, you can email our clerk to get a copy of it. You can call or message me or anyone on council if you have questions. And we'll be looking this over through July and August.
Thank you. Any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to propose a motion to accept unclaimed cash and gift cards in the possession of the city's police department from 2024, totaling $129.49.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving into the mayor's report. I will start with Director Chaddick is not here this evening. He has resigned from his position, not as of yet, but I have tasked him with getting us through the transition period, and that's what he's working on right now, I'm sure, this evening, because I know how he tends to do things. But the date is not set yet, but he's going to help us work through the transition of getting a new director in. We've moved very quickly from the time he told us and getting it posted. Some of you may have seen that online. We have interviews tomorrow, so that should speak to how important I want to, how important it is to fill that role and make sure that we get someone in there that is viable and can continue on the operation there. So we're working on that. I want to send a big thank you to Dispatch and Fire. They have been very busy of late, and I know the chief's going to speak this, and I'll leave it at that, so I'll let him give the details. But my goodness, there's been a lot going on, and I can't give enough credit to those folks that save lives. I mean, they're doing a heck of a job. I'm not leaving police out, but with what's going on with Dispatch and Fire of late, this is very important that we point out that these folks are working very hard to keep us safe, and I appreciate that more than I can put into words. Second thing I want to bring up is a happy birthday to Director Wilson and Chief Yakapovic of last week. I always like to point out your birthdays and make sure that we recognize them. So happy birthday, gentlemen. We're at that time of year for safety. We have a lot of graduation parties and things going on, including myself. My daughter's graduating, it's a big deal. I'm stressed to the max getting everything ready in my home for all the people that are going to come there. The one thing I want to point out to everyone, yes, I'm stressed, if you haven't figured it out. That's a big part of it. But if you have to have people at your house that stay overnight, and if you consume too much adult beverages, please call the police department and let them know that, you know, or ask that you can leave your cars on the street. We're trying, we have an ordinance that you're not allowed to park overnight on the streets, so please give the courtesy to the police department and let them know that, hey, we may have some cars, we're having a graduation party, or any party for that matter. And, you know, we'll work with you on that. We're not going to be difficult about that. The only catch to that is obviously on a main road. We're not really going to allow that, that's not going to fly. But we'll work with you, and if you have questions about that prior to your event, please call the police department. We'll be more than willing to work with you on that and make sure we get that taken care of for you. But be safe, that's most important. Last but not least, don't drive distracted, put the phones down and drive the car. Committee reports.
Parks and Air Commission was going to have its June meeting next week, but due to the changing in directors, we will be postponing our meeting until July, hopefully. Hopefully it won't spill into August. So if you're interested in attending the next meeting, I suggest you can contact the clerk. He'll know as soon as there is a new meeting, and he'll let you know. Or you can contact me, I'll let you know when that new meeting is scheduled. But we wish Director Chaddick all the best on his new position, and we're excited to see if a new director can keep up the good work that everyone has done thus far. So as I said, there won't be a June meeting, but we'll let you know about the meeting in July.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll go into department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out the great job the crews are doing in the caucus room and in the, what's it called, vestibule?
Yeah.
The foyer, and just all the updates over here. They're doing a fantastic job, as always. We did have a resignation in the department recently, so we do have a full-time job posted, so we'll be working on that. And then also, I've been hiring a lot of seasonals. We fired quite a few, like ten or twelve right now, so we're about tapped out, but it's pretty cool to see and give young kids a chance to come run a weed eater, pick up trash. That's all.
Thank you. Director Gelati.
Yeah, thank you to council for passing the legislation this evening for Ledge Road, so we'll get that moving forward. Otherwise, road paving taking place on several different streets all around the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Vares.
It's crunch time, residents. Due date for your resident refund is July fifteenth, unless you have an extension with Rita. End of my report.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have any of those checks gotten out yet?
Yes. Two batches, one yesterday, one today.
Okay. My wife asks me naturally.
Yeah. Yep. We started printing checks yesterday.
I think this is the last council meeting until.
It is, before. Yeah, that's why it's crunch time.
Director Collins.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have anything exciting like resident refunds. I can't send you guys checks or anything, so sorry.
Well, you helped, you helped with that, thank you.
Fifty-one helped us ticket since the last meeting. Major projects include some network and server upgrades. End of report.
Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. HR has hired an HR payroll specialist. She started this week. Her name is Mandy Palato. She is, only been here a few days, but we're very excited about what she brings to the party, and she fits in very well. End of report.
Thank you.
Anyone would love to hear their boss say that. Welcome to the team, come to the party.
Chief Ripley, you don't want to go to the chief's party, though.
I like all the parties in HR. First and foremost, very happy the end of May. We finished all of the hydrant flushing in the entire district. We now have a cure-out painting, the many upwards of 200 hydrants that Cleveland Water has replaced over the last year and a half, which is good to see. The mayor touched on it, it's been a rough week. Calls, we've had, one of which I'm sure you saw on the news. And then just this week, we've had two house fires, one late in the evening, one this morning at 6:00 a.m. And I know we talked about our dispatch center during Telecommunicators Week, but two of those three calls I mentioned, dispatch had a huge positive impact on the outcome by continuing to keep callers on the line, their calmness. The call this morning, the lady was walking her dog in Greenwood Village and saw what she thought was a fire in the woods, and it wanted to be in a house probably 300 yards away. And dispatch was able to check her location of her cell phone, and it doesn't matter the dispatcher's working, because I'm very confident, I'm sure Chief Yakapovic would agree, it pretty much doesn't matter who's working. We get that service from our dispatchers every single day, 24 hours a day. And I'm just ecstatic that we have that quality in that department. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Yakapovic.
Thank you, Mayor. So to talk about the dispatch center, and I kind of chuckled because Brian and I won't maybe steal our thunder in your report, but I gotta go a little further. So Ohio law requires that 95% of 911 calls received be answered within 20 seconds, okay? 95% of calls coming into the dispatch center need to be answered within 20 seconds. Our volume of 911 calls is higher than any in this area, and our average, 100% of our calls are answered under five, and our average is three.
Wow.
And they're busy. And not only do they answer the call timely, but they get the right information, they're passing it to the appropriate fire police EMS. They do a great job, I can't say enough. I agree with both you guys, and unfortunately, they're not spoken about enough. They do a great job. Also, we have a new police officer that started with us Sunday, Austin Hayes. He's fresh out of the academy, he's an FTO, he's doing great so far, and we're glad to have him on board. That's all.
One question for you, Chief, I think it's pertinent. Is it Yakapovic or is it Yakapovich?
Depends on who you are, which side of the family. My brother would call it this, my dad would call it that, and his younger brother would say something completely different. So whatever makes you happy.
I've always said Yakapovich, though. I wasn't sure, because I had heard someone else say something different.
Yeah, it's all good.
Chief works real well.
Well, you say Chief Yakapovic. Very rare I call you by your first name, you know that. Director Gedetti.
No report, sir.
Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I have a motion for executive session. I'd like to move to enter into executive session pursuant to revised Code 121.22G. Paragraph one, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee or official. And paragraph six, details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or a public office if disclosure of the matters discussed could be reasonably, be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Brandt.
Yes?
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, we're going to go upstairs to my topic room, because our rooms are under construction, if you guys don't mind, and then we'll come back and adjourn after. I don't think we have any official business to attend to when we come back, so you guys are not required to stay. Okay, we're going to go upstairs to my topic room, because our room's under construction, if you guys don't mind, and then we'll come back in adjourned after. I don't think we have any official business to attend to when we come back, so you guys are not required to stay.